I'd like to call this May 6th, 2021 Board of Education Meeting to Order. Mr. Onagnostu, would you take the role?
Sure. Mrs. Bissell?
Here.
Mrs. Soli?
Here.
Mr. Miko?
Here.
Mr. Roberts?
Here.
And Mrs. Housen?
Here.
We're all present, please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Next on our agenda is our district goals. Our district goals remain the same: student achievement and growth, financial prudence and community engagement. And we measure our, uh, all of our decisions based on those three goals. We measure our success on how well we accomplish those three goals. Next is public comment. I do have one: Joanne Hudak.
May I just ask at the moment?
Certainly. If you would just state your name and your address for the record, and then you have approximately three minutes.
Sure. My name is Joanne Hudak. My address is 13760 Brigadoon Way, Strongsville, 44149. And I'm here to represent my son, Gideon. And he is a student at Chapman Elementary. He is eight years old, and he is in second grade. And a couple of important things that you need to know about Gideon is that he is a special education student. He is on the autism spectrum. And though he is eight years old, he is nonverbal. And he has a mixed receptive and expressive delay disorder. So basically means he doesn't talk and he has a very limited understanding in language. And I brought a picture here to present so that you, uh, you understand that it's, this isn't a story that's coming from me. It's a story that's coming from him. Uh, so we've had some issues with transportation actually over the past couple of years. One issue last year that I had requested video of, of one of his bus rides. And after requesting that and following up numerous times, I was actually told that that video was lost. Uh, so it was downloaded to a computer at the Transportation Department, and then I was told that the, uh, person whose computer it was downloaded to had some issues and their computer's no longer functional. I was never able to view that video. And I think it's important to see this from the lens of me as a parent and through the lens of my son, which is that when I ask for video evidence and it's not provided, it makes me suspicious. And especially in the sense that I can't get words from my son to know what the situation was, to figure out if it's something that I need to be seriously concerned about. And with that evidence or video not being provided, it just makes me more suspicious about what happened on that bus ride. Now, I did talk to Dr. Reiba about that issue last year, and I was very appreciative of him getting involved in, in trying to, to get a hold of that, but obviously we weren't successful. That being said, I do understand that there are things that happen. Technology isn't always the best, and it happens. So, we went through, we let it go, we passed by, and moving on. So this year, again, we're continuing to have issues with transportation. The aides on the bus think that, uh, working with these kids is as simple as you need to tell Gideon to do X and you need to tell Gideon to do Y. But with a person like my son, it's not just that simple, unfortunately. I wish it was, but he is a very well-behaved child and he is on an IEP, but he does not have a behavior plan. But there are certain things with children with autism that you just can't, um, mix up their routine and expect them to be okay with it. And if you're gonna make those changes, you need to have the background and the experience to be able to help them manage through those changes. And the aides on the bus do not have that experience. I brought this issue up actually last year also with Dr. Reiba about the experience of these bus aides. I have not been able to get anywhere about, um, their training specifically with special education students. They're on the bus for special education students to be able to help them. And if they don't know whether it's about confidentially, confidential reasons why they can't know specifically what's on their IEP, they should still know broadly how to manage people on the spectrum. Just like police officers, firefighters, there's a big push on them becoming familiar with how to deal with people on the spectrum. These are aides that, this aide, these aides spend an hour and a half on the bus guaranteed with my child every day. And for them to not have the background and experience to manage that is unacceptable to me. So now last week, Wednesday, there was, and the week before, there was yet another issue on the bus with my son. And I reached out to several different people at Strongsville City Schools to request the, the video footage again on the bus. And I had reached out to Mrs. Penny, Mrs. Serso, Andy Tru- Trulio, excuse my pronunciation on that. And, uh, and I had copied in Teresa Karsnak, who is an invaluable, uh, resource to this district. I want to make sure that I mention that. Uh, specifically for me as a single mom trying to navigate work and navigate the, the ins and outs of special education. It's, she's, she's an invaluable resource. Anyway, um, I made that request Wednesday evening of, of last week. And as I stand before you today, eight days later, I still have not received the video from that bus ride. And again, it makes me extremely suspicious of what's going on on that bus. Mind you, it could very well be nothing, but how can a parent, you can't put yourself in my shoes and be okay with that? Knowing that you can't ask your child, "Are you safe? Do you feel safe? Are you concerned? Is there something I need to worry about?" I can't ask those questions. And I'm then forced to send him to school every day and home every day, not knowing what's going on with that bus, and wondering, it could be innocent, but wondering why I can't get that video. And I appreciate, uh, Dr. Reiba, uh, your assistance in that. I did loop him in, uh, yesterday to, uh, to again try to push to get that video. And it seems as though we're, we're getting closer. We're getting closer to getting that, but there is no reason why a parent like me should have to reach out to the Superintendent of Strongsville City Schools to get video evidence of a bus ride. It's unacceptable. And now this is again the second time. And my son's in second grade, and I do not want to continue through his entire education here in Strongsville dealing with these issues. And it all comes down to the, the training and the background and the understanding and the patience and all of that of, of these bus aides. If you're gonna have aides on the bus, they're there for these kids, and they need to know how to work with them. Thank you for your time.
So, Joanne, I want to thank you for bringing this to our attention. I greatly appreciate it, and I can imagine how nervous or stressful it might be, but, uh, based on that picture, I know why you're advocating, uh, so strongly.
Yes.
Steve, can we get the video by tomorrow? So you'll, you've heard it from us, we'll get you the video. You have, you're entitled to that. I, I don't know. It's gonna stop eventually. Um, but we'll get it to you by noon tomorrow.
Thank you.
And I appreciate-
And I also want to make sure that I mention too that I, I don't hold the school at fault for this. I know that Mrs. Penny has followed up numerous times trying to track down this video. So it's not as though the school has not been responsive, they very much have, but they're not getting response from the Transportation Department.
And we'll fix that. What I can, as a board, as an administration, as a, uh, as a school district, we can do better. We will do better. I, I trust that you'll work with us, and we'll, uh, we'll rapidly improve. But we, we definitely will get you that video by tomorrow.
And I hope as Dr. Reiba knows from past issues that we've worked on, I, I am a very patient and very understanding and very reasonable woman. And I hope we can, we can work through this and, and get this fixed. And I, again, ask you to please seriously consider the training of these aides, um, because that is the root of the issue here.
So we have your contact info, information. You, you can expect and we will respond.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next on our agenda is Treasurer's Report. Mr. Onagnostu.
Thank you, Mr. Miko. I have two items for your consideration tonight, um, each with a separate vote. If you recall from a few board meetings ago, uh, the board authorized a resolution to go out to bid for depository contracts. And it's a legal requirement that we go, uh, once every five years. Uh, we've sent out, uh, RFPs to all the local banks. Uh, the banks that responded were Cortland Bank, Dollar Bank, Huntington Bank, JP Morgan Chase, and US Bank. Uh, we will continue to use, use US Bank as our checking account, but these other banks with the approval, um, has authorized within that five-year period if we ever need to take advantage of any, um, tools that they have or if we need to make a switch within that five years, that these banks will be available to us. So be it resolved upon the recommendation of the Treasurer that a resolution authorizing the Treasurer to use Cortland Bank, Dollar Bank, Huntington Bank, JP Morgan Chase Bank, and US Bank for depository contracts for active and interim deposits be approved.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second? Second.
Motion by Mr. Roberts, second by Mrs. Housen, any discussion?
So as George highlighted, uh, US Bank is a primary banker, but, uh, by approving all of these, it gives us the flexibility for the next five years, uh, to respond if, if the market changes or we need better service. Uh, you know, US Bank has treated us well in the past, so they earned, uh, continued support, and we'll go from there. Any other discussion? Please take the role.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mrs. Housen?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissell?
Yes.
Mrs. Soli?
Yes.
And Mr. Miko?
Yes, and the motion carries.
And then the next item is for Investment Management Services. Uh, this is just to reaffirm that Meter Investments will continue to be our investment service provider. Um, it was previously board-approved June 30th, 2016, which was right around the same time that we approved the last bids for depository contracts. Although not required, I would like to have these two aligned that we reaffirm every five years. That way it's on the record and, um... So be it resolved upon the recommendation of the Treasurer that a resolution authorizing the continued investment of interim monies through Meter Investment Management, Inc., and authorizing the execution of related agreements for such purposes and ratifying, confirming prior actions be approved. The board previously authorized investment interim funds through Meter on June 30th, 2016.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Roberts, second by Mrs. Housen, any discussion?
So, uh, Sherry and myself were at the last Finance Committee meeting, and Meter did a very nice presentation about their, uh, uh, what the service is for us, and it does benefit the district. We get, uh, more interest than I get on my checking account, I'll tell you that much. But, uh, it is a sign of the times at how low the rate is, but the rate is as effective as it can be. Uh, I do want to assure the public that it's, uh, we follow the, uh, the rules as far as state law is concerned. Um, so all the money that is entrusted to us is invested safely, but at the same time, we try to maximize it as much as possible. Any other questions or discussion? Please take the role.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mrs. Housen?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissell?
Yes.
Mrs. Soli?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes, and the motion carries. Next on our-
With that, that concludes my report.
Any other questions for George? Next is Superintendent's Report. Dr. Reiba.
Thank you, Mr. Miko. I have a couple of discussion items. The first is, uh, the extracurricular study. We've talked about that in prior, uh, board meetings about taking a look at, uh, extracurricular opportunities at the elementary level, uh, appropriate coaching levels or suggested coaching levels for, uh, middle school and high school athletics, as well as, uh, supplemental or extracurricular opportunities at the middle school and high school level that are non-athletic. So everybody has the slides, uh, in front of them. Uh, and just kind of framing the conversation tonight, I'm not, I'm not providing a recommendation. I'm not asking for guidance or a decision. It's just an update as to show you and share with you where we're at in the process of this exploration. Um, so as I go through each section, if you have questions you want answered, additional feedback, I plan on coming back on May 20th, um, and, and providing clarity and a recommendation and a path forward. So, um, as we take a look at this, let's start with the elementary extracurriculars and kind of what's the overall vision for this. It's about expanding opportunities for our students, giving them the ability to try something new, build relationships, build connections, develop their model Mustang skills. That's being resilient, collaborative, innovative, global, um, and, uh, you know, doing that, uh, in areas that may not be offered in the traditional nine-to-three-thirty experience. If you remember, for those of you that have been here for a while, we used to have five, uh, elementary extracurricular opportunities at each elementary school, that every elementary school was allowed to pick and choose what they wanted. Due to financial issues in the past, that went down to zero. A handful of years ago, we increased it back to one, and every elementary building has a student council. So the desired outcome that we talked about in our strategic planning, that we would add two additional extracurricular opportunities back for each elementary school, um, uh, by August of 2021, uh, for a total of three, uh, extracurricular opportunities for our students. So the first part was to, to kind of go over this with our elementary principals, give them the parameters, have them talk, uh, to their staff, hear that there's what students may be interested in, and provide suggestions as to, uh, what extracurriculars they may want to offer. So as you can see here, every building has three, um, and you can kind of go down the line. So just, uh, in, in total, we have, uh, two buildings that would like to have an art club, uh, for students. Some of you may know, we do have, we have offered art, not Artsonia, Young Rembrandts. Uh, that's a paid, uh, opportunity for our families. All of these would be, uh, free opportunities to our families. Uh, so we have two buildings that are interested in starting an art club. Uh, uh, one building that wants to do a best buddies club, which is linking, you know, older students to younger students to help in a variety of areas. Uh, a book club, choir at quite a few buildings, a school newspaper at one. Student council would still continue to be at every elementary school building, and a tech club at another building. Uh, I shared with the board in my update the full sheet that had the link to the details of what each of these, um, extracurricular opportunities would look like. Uh, but that's what they have proposed, uh, so far. So let's talk about cost and next step. So the cost, um, to provide ten additional elementary supplemental contracts, which would provide these, uh, ten additional opportunities for kids, in total, uh, would cost an additional roughly $28,000 for next year. Supplemental contracts, as you're aware, are, uh, a percentage of the base salary for our teachers. So as base salary would increase by two percent, so would this rate in each subsequent year. Um, but this is, this is the total cost. This is salary plus additional STRS, uh, and all the Medicare and things that we have to pay on any salary. So this is truly, uh, the total cost. What are the next steps? Um, we will spend time with the elementary principals reviewing the specifics of each of the proposals. You know, what does best buddies look like? Who does it involve? Tech club, you know, when is it gonna meet? What, what targets is it gonna have? Um, and then eventually, if we do have agreement with the board, we post and fill these supplemental opportunities at each building. And the goal would be we'd be ready to start the 21-22 school year with all three of these opportunities. So I'm gonna pause there to see if there's any questions, feedback, things you want me to come back with on the 20th with regard to elementary extracurricular opportunities.
Cameron, if, looking at the, uh, the chart there, I would say there's only certain clubs and, and activities at certain schools. Is there an opportunity for somebody that's at Chapman that wanted to be in art club, go to Maraski, or vice versa, for best buddies or whatever it may be? Um, obviously they all have student council, but obviously some of the students are gonna have different interests at those particular schools. So is there opportunity for kids to take in those at the, at the different schools, or how's that gonna kind of work?
So I'll dig into that for next time to get clarity. Uh, so some of the things we have to look at is when are they gonna be offered? Uh, and then depending, because a lot of these typically are right before the school day starts or right after the school day ends. Um, and if that's the case, it would be challenging to make the trip, uh, from one building to the other. If there is a gap in time where students can go over there, it would have to be a discussion with Transportation to see what is the feasibility of getting a student from Kinsner to Maraski for an art club. Uh, and then what's the, what's the enrollment? We'd wanna be able to offer that opportunity to students at the building first, um, and then if there was enrollment. So I can dig into that, uh, Mr. Roberts, and come back with clarity, uh, once I can answer some of those questions for you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Cameron, I'm wondering, um, I know you said the administration worked on determining these. Was there any input from, um, students or parents in terms of what, what are the things that the families would be interested in participating in?
I don't know anything that there was any input or feedback, uh, looked at from the families. I know they talked to staff, they talked to students, um, to get, I, I can't say holistically every building, but I know, uh, they did take a look at, or some of the buildings took a look at talking to students, seeing what some of their interests were. Um, so I can dig into and give clarity on what communication pathways did they get, uh, in terms to, to make these decisions. Yeah.
Cameron, one other question. Is this K through five at the elementaries, or just particular grades at the elementaries that would have access to these clubs?
Yeah, so it depends on the actual, uh, club. So I, I think if I remember correctly, like, for example, the tech club is targeting students two to five, you know, grades two to five. Um, so, uh, and then the choir is usually more of an upper elementary. Um, so, uh, you know, that is, it's dependent. The goal is to try and get something for everybody, uh, but some of these clubs would not be for everybody just based on the topic and the focus. It would be for, uh, more upper elementary.
In the same vein, I'm looking at Whitney as an example. There's nothing that would be younger-driven, so is that something we could look at addressing?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yes.
Was it assumed that every school dis, or every elementary school would keep student council?
It was a, a direction given.
Okay.
Um, that we wanted to, uh, it's been there. Uh, we, we wanted to, to keep that, uh, as a consistent opportunity, um, from all, all of the buildings. If the board is open to expanding that and just saying, "Hey, pick your top three." If student council is part of that, great. If not, we're okay in a different direction. Um, that's something that we can take a look at as well. Uh, we just kept it because we've had it for so many years. It's a nice student leadership opportunity, uh, for students to become involved.
I would be okay with running it up the flagpole.
Okay.
I mean, I don't, I don't want to speak for any of the elementaries if they all want student council. I'm, I, that's fine with me if the student, if it's an active group and, and so on. But, you know, if, if a school would say, "You know what? If we, if it was up to us, we'd rather substitute book club for student council."
Yeah.
I don't know if I would argue strongly in any way.
Okay. Yeah, I'll verify with them. All right, moving on to athletics. Now athletics, um, going back to our kind of strategic planning discussion, the direction given from the board was go ahead, explore options, do the study, uh, and then we'll kind of go from there. So elementary was clearly, we're ready to go forward with two, figure out the details. So this is kind of just a study. We've had the conversations with our athletic, uh, team. I mean, by athletic team, I mean, um, our athletic director, athletic coordinator, uh, and administration at both the middle school and high school, uh, as a part of this. So what's the overall vision for the athletics? It's to, uh, define athletic opportunities and coaching levels that are needed, uh, and that are commensurate not only with the Athletic League standards, but also give us the opportunity to develop the skills of our athletes to be a premier athletics program. And as I just talked about, uh, it's about, this, this work is about analyzing the coaching levels and, and providing a, a report to the board, uh, as to what that is. So we, we took a look at this before I kind of shared the charts in middle school and high school. What I asked our, our middle school and ath, uh, high school athletic personnel to do is to go through every sport, um, list what our current coaching levels are, uh, and, and in terms of paid contracts, uh, and then take a look at, you know, what are we seeing in the rest of the league? What do you see as needs based on your expertise, uh, as an athletic leader? Uh, and then provide recommendations as to where you would like to see some, uh, additional staffing or where you may think we're overstaffed and where you think we're in a good spot with. So, so they did that. They provided, uh, those, the, those recommendations, um, and that feedback. Uh, and so let's, we've broken it down between middle school and high school. So, uh, you know, in terms of, uh, sports, if you don't see the sport on here, that means that they're not recommending any change. They feel we are adequately staffed, uh, for those sports and, and for the foreseeable future. Um, so, you know, you don't see football, you don't see track. That's because they feel like the staffing is at an appropriate level there. The other thing that I would mention is at times, I know I don't have the details on here of specifically how many coaches are there, uh, but sometimes you may say, "Hey, it seems like there's like five coaches on the sideline, and you're asking for one more." Uh, that's because a lot of our athletic teams that, in the traditional, uh, coaching levels, have those additional coaches, they are splitting contracts. What that means is, for soccer, for example, we give three contracts for boys soccer. Uh, they're saying, "Okay, we will have, uh, three contracts, but we're gonna take one of those, and we're gonna split it in half." So we could have two coaches. Two coaches agree, "I'll take half the money." Um, that way they have more coaching and oversight, but it's not fully paid. And we have volunteer coaches as well. So for the middle school, what is being recommended is, uh, a total of one additional coach, which would be a total increase of, uh, a little over $6,000 for the year. Um, if, if you remember, uh, a handful of years ago, uh, we reduced, uh, eighth grade, uh, teams. We have two seventh grade teams and two eighth grade teams in cut sports, uh, for basketball and volleyball. Uh, a handful of years ago, we went to two seventh grade teams and one eighth grade team. Uh, and so they are asking for reinstatement of a second eighth grade team for volleyball, boys' basketball, and girls' basketball. Uh, they're also recommending that, right now, we have three coaches for cross-country, boys and girls together. Uh, they are saying that, based on participation levels, we can handle that with two coaches. And the same thing for wrestling. We have three coaches. Based on, uh, student participation levels, they feel that two coaches is sufficient for that. Um, uh, and that's the recommendation. The other part of their recommendation is, uh, they feel that we can reduce those coaches in a safe manner uh, that continues to, uh, help support our athletes, and, but at the same time, add opportunities for students. Um, and increase the opportunities for, you know, in basketball, 24 girls to play basketball instead of 12. Uh, and so that's, uh, the recommendation, uh, for the middle school. In terms of the high school, uh, the sports that they're looking at are soccer. Um, they have a, what all of the recommendations are, are, is, uh, is an addition of an assistant coach, um, based on, as I said, standard coaching levels for the sports, uh, that we see with our other, uh, our other league schools. Um, and again, a lot of these, it's the addition of a varsity assistant coach. So if you take a look at our coaching levels right now, uh, for a lot of these sports, we have a varsity head coach, a JV head coach, we have a freshman head coach, or, you know, in soccer, we have a couple of JV coaches. Um, and a lot of other schools have a varsity assistant. That's what we reduced a long time ago, um, and that's what they're asking that would help, uh, develop and support and coach our, our students. Um, so for soccer, they kind of have two proposals that they've put. Either bring back that varsity assistant for both boys and girls soccer, so that'd be an addition of two coaches. Um, or if they can only, if we're only gonna be able to get one coach, they said they would prefer a goalie coach that could be shared between both the boys and, uh, girls' team. Uh, that's why you see a, a total increase of six to seven coaches and a, a total cost in a range there. Volleyball, basketball, baseball, and softball are all for the same reasons that, uh, I just mentioned. Uh, the additions for that varsity assistant. And boys and girls cross-country, again, based on participation levels and restructuring of the coaching positions. Uh, currently, there are, uh, a head coach and an assistant coach for girls, and the same for boys. They are looking to move to, uh, a head coach for girls, a head coach for boys, and a shared assistant coach between, uh, both programs. So what else is being recommended? Um, not on that chart, is there is a recommendation, uh, that we, uh, look at starting a bowling club. Uh, bowling is a OHSA sport. Uh, there is a, a, a protocol that we, we've borrowed from a neighboring school district that has kind of gone through the, the bowling path. In my past life at Copley High School, I've gone through the bowling club to a bowling sport, uh, pathway as well. But basically, it's, uh, not funded by the district. Uh, you know, it's volunteer coaches, students that want to participate. Uh, they can become involved in a bowling league. Uh, and if you have participation in numbers for X amount of years and say that we see it can be a supported program, ultimately, it would be determined whether it would become a, a recognized varsity sport that would be paid for with a supplemental contract from us. Uh, but they are looking to start a bowling club. No cost to the district, but it eventually could be if we would decide to recognize it, uh, as a sport. Um, and then the next steps, uh, again, provide feedback today, options on coaching levels. Um, and then we can use, uh, this as a menu of options for future decisions. However, we always have to take Title IX into consideration as we're adding, uh, coaching levels. So I'm gonna pause there and, uh, get feedback, questions that you have in terms of athletics.
Dr. Reiba, do a couple of questions. One, the cost for the different sports seems to be, seems to vary.
Yeah.
In the high school.
Mm-hmm.
But in the middle school, it's the same. Why is that?
So if you take a look at the middle school, the middle school, for all of these sports that were selected, there's technically not an assistant coach level at the middle school. It's all head coach. So, you know, every one of these coaches, it's all a percentage of the base. It's all the same percentage for the middle school sports, and since there's no assistant, they're all the same level. So all three of the wrestling coaches are considered head wrestling coaches. Same for the other sports. Then when you take a look at the high school, part of this, these are all assistant coaches, but based on how the contract is written, the percentage is different based on the sport. So, you know, some may be 11% of the base, some may be 11 and a half percent of the base. So that's, that's the difference in why they're, they're paid at different levels.
Okay, I think, I think I understand that. Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
When you talk about volunteer coaches, would, would that be like a parent? Or would the school be responsible for getting that person? How does that work?
So how that works, and Jenny, you know, developed a procedure for volunteer coaches a handful of years ago. So we have community members, parents that, you know, want to coach, just want to give back, they love the sport. And they come and say, hey, I would love to coach, I don't need to get paid though, I just want to do it. The coaching staff wants their expertise and wants their help. They go through a similar process as we do for all of our other coaches. There's specific rules about, you know, who needs to be with them, you know, when we just have a volunteer coach. But they go through a similar process, except they're just not paid.
Would you be able to get us a number of ratio, the ratio of student, student athletes to coaches for all sports?
At, at both levels, all levels? Sure, oh yeah. Yeah, so we can, we can get that information and I'll provide that to you so you can see. I know for the middle school, I have it for at least about the last five years. Or at least, I have it since the time they combined into, to one middle school. So we'll be able to share that. I've also asked them to take a look at tryout numbers. You know, specifically at the middle school, because I think that, that makes a difference to, to say those additional teams. You know, if we're seeing historically, now the tryout numbers may be a little challenging to see if anybody was writing those down because they're not in a system anywhere. But, you know, I think one of the things we have to say is, okay, if we've had 16 girls trying out for eighth grade volleyball, Jenny, how many players do you need on a volleyball team?
About 10.
Okay.
How many should you have on a volleyball team?
Typically have more, but usually a 10 at least.
So it's, you know, you can't field two teams with 16 girls trying out. The part that you don't know is do you have girls not trying out because they know there's only 10 spots? Or 12 spots, or whatever it may be. So that, that's kind of the unknown, but yes, Ms. Housen, we will get you and the rest of the board, the, the participation data to see what the level that's at, and then we'll break that down by ratio.
My other question was, if we take away, what if we see numbers rising? Like cross country is a non-cut sport. How will we accommodate more athletes if with two coaches? Can we add back?
Yeah, so one of the things I think we would want to do is, you know, and I can loop back with the athletic team and say, what are the thresholds then? If you're saying right now, you know, we've got 30 kids in middle school cross country, I made that up, I'm not sure what the number is, and we're okay going down to a ratio of 15 to one. What's that?
There was 39 this year.
I know. I was, no.
Continue.
Thank you. Well, as we break that down into a ratio of 19 and a half to one, you know, that's where we have to take a look at is, is what is the threshold where we would trigger adding an additional coach? You know, you take a look at some of our other sports like tennis, gymnastics, you know, that, that have more swings in their participation. That's good feedback and we can start to look at that as well.
The other thing, just to take into consideration for cross country, we do have special needs students that come out and run. And again, it's a non-cut sport. It's great to see them out there. I would hope that, you know, we could take into consideration how, how that would be, you know, affect them.
Yeah, absolutely.
So the assistant coaches isn't based on numbers necessarily, right? Because I'm thinking of like basketball and soccer, like it doesn't ma, does it matter how many people are, are on those teams or tryouts for those sports that you would add another coach or not? You know, because you're only going to have like the same with volleyball, 12 people on a team either way.
I think what I would suggest is we take a look at this kind of in, in two, two different ways. What's an appropriate level for a cut sport that we know we're always going to have a similar range like you're talking about? And so the recommendation for all of these, except for cross country cut sports, is that we need a varsity assistant coach. You know, we, we know there's always going to be X amount of kids in that range in, in these sports. So they are saying to do what we need to do, we need that varsity assistant coach, we need that additional paid coach. The other non-cut sports, that's where we would have to sit down and talk about what's the ratio to student athletes that we want? Because every year could be different. And it may not just be the addition, but it may be the reduction to say, hey, when we get down to this level, this is where we're at. I know, I know Jenny and I years ago, especially with track, we would hire the, the coaching levels and then we would say, Coach X, you are here, but depending on the numbers, we may not recommend you to the board and fill that because, you know, middle school track, you could have 120 kids, you could have 60 kids. It just depends. So that's something that we, we've done in the past, but we can quantify and discuss that and get some ratios built that would be helpful.
I don't know if this is, if this is the vein that Sherry's in, but the one thing I'd like more information on, the, the middle school in my mind is easy to understand. It, it directly increases opportunities for students to participate. A second volleyball team, a second basketball team. So that is easy for me to understand. The additional coaches, I'd, I'd like some understanding of what that actually gets the district. And I don't expect an answer now, but like I said, hiring another coach to coach another team, that one is much easier to understand and digest than we want to restore assistant coaches. You know, if I look at the girls' soccer team, I don't know how they're going to do better if they have a, another assistant coach. But I don't understand girls' soccer or girls' assistant soccer coaches. So if you could give us some, give some feedback on that.
Absolutely. Ms. Bissell, I think you have a question.
Yeah, I know you said you, you compared like staffing levels to other school districts. Was there the same kind of comparison in terms of the number of teams, right? Like are we, because we only have one eighth grade girls' basketball team, are we behind the other districts? Like if we add a second one, is there going to be someone to play, is what I'm asking?
Yeah, so there is, it becomes a little tricky. So the answer is yes, there is somebody to play. What we have to look at is, and I've asked our, you know, Mr. Messer at the middle school, what is our deadline for sharing with the league? Because schedules are built for next year already. And so in our conversations, he said, there's still time to be able to add these games and it could work out. But yes, there's plenty of teams to play, it's just getting enough notice to get that schedule there. In terms of the advantage or disadvantage, again, what I, what I would share is that, two thoughts. First of all, you look at this as, when you go through middle school sports to high school sports, there's a natural process where student talent and ability to compete is exceeded by others. So this, I, I look at this as we're giving kids another opportunity to play the game. For some of them, the last year, they're going to be able to play an organized, school-based sport. Do I think we're losing talented kids because we only have two eighth, or one eighth grade team? No, I think the kids that are athletically gifted and talented are playing and, and working through our system. Where I do think we have the potential of losing some athletes is, are those athletes that are just taking longer to develop. Especially as you're taking a look at middle school and kids going through puberty and growing and developing their talents. There are some kids that are going to not have that opportunity and just give up and say, I'm done, and not continue on. So I don't think we're losing our star athletes, but I do think we may not be capitalizing on some of our athletes that could develop later on in life and may not have had that opportunity or experience.
So the other, other schools in our conference, do they have two eighth grade girls' basketball teams? Most of them, some of them, we know?
The ones that, I can't speak specifically because a lot of schools are, so Brunswick, I believe, memory serves, they have the two teams.
Okay.
So it really has to look at what are schools similar to, you know, Medina still has two middle schools, Aleary has two middle schools. So the big schools, as far as I know, still have that, two opportunities for the kids.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Dr. Iba, this is very much in the weeds, so I apologize for this question. I would, I would ask that we take a strong look at how we, I'm in favor of the two teams. I think the extra opportunity for the kids to play is extremely important and to your point about the development is absolutely true. I'd be very concerned, not concerned, I'd be very careful in how we're putting the teams together and dividing up the talent and how that's kind of selected as well. Because that could, could look at almost like an AB kind of situation. So just something to consider as we're going down that, that path.
Yeah, what we do, currently we have two teams in seventh grade, so it has been, we have not gone with the AB structure. It has been a division of talent, the two coaches, there's tryouts, the two coaches sit and talk and distribute the teams in a variety of ways. So it's not the true AB structure.
Another question I had was, I know, I believe I was right, head coaches do have to be a SES staff teacher of some kind?
No, that's not accurate.
Not accurate, okay. I now have a question. Thank you.
So a lot of them are, but the, the rule is, there is a law in terms of supplemental contracts and related to teachers that if you have a qualified teacher that applies for a coaching position, they are to be given first opportunity outside of others. But if they are not a qualified candidate or we don't have teachers apply, we have coaches that are not, I mean, they're all school employees through coaching, but they're not a school employee other than coaching.
Okay, thank you.
All right, last, I want to talk about secondary extracurriculars. So this is kind of like what we're talking about at the elementary level, but some ideas at the middle school and high school. Same overarching vision, want to expand opportunities, try something new, build connections. When we take a look at the high school, we have a lot of extra, supplemental contracts, but they're focused on, you know, class advisors. They're, they're, we have student council, we have NHS, I think we have key club. But other than that, there's really, there's really not a lot of clear defined opportunities. We just have a lot of teachers that volunteer, kids want to have a club, they'll volunteer and say, hey, I'll be an advisor. So the idea is to provide some, you know, systemic structure and develop some clubs that we think will add value to, to the high school and middle school and opportunities for our students. Again, we're looking at non-traditional extracurricular opportunities. Finalize some thoughts to you, but again, the idea is just getting your feedback and interest. So similar at, as I did at the elementary, I talked to Ms. Boydham and Mr. Wengler and said, you know, do your research, talk to people, see what are some ideas that you think would be nice additions as extracurricular opportunities for the middle school or high school. I didn't give them a number, you have to pick no more than three. So these are the seven that they came up with. Both of them are unique to each level. So you could see for the high school, they would like to have an academic challenge team, a chess club, an esports team, and a robotics club. We have a robotics class, and so they were looking to expand that to a club as well. At the middle school, they're looking at a homework club, a drama club, and Mustang mentors. And again, in that sheet that I sent you, it's got the proposal and all the, all the details behind those ideas. If you take a look at this, since, if you take a look at this in total cost, I broke it down, not by the whole thing, but just by per supplemental contract. So it'd be a little over $3,600 per supplemental contract for next school year. What are the next steps? Just like the elementary, review and finalize the specifics of each proposal. Get your direction and feedback on options that you would like us to continue to explore. And then we can use this as a menu of options for future decision-making. So going back to the chart, same, same question, any thoughts, any feedback, any other details you'd like to, to bring back to you?
Homework club is not detention.
It is not detention.
Okay. So I want to make sure.
Yes.
Dr. Iba, I think from a consistency standpoint, I'd like to see maybe like a tech and art club continue from elementary to middle school, potentially high school. And then anything we have in the STEM space that can be added in there. I know obviously robotics is in that and.
Yeah.
Maybe esports could be considered that, I guess. But, and anything in that STEM space, I think would be a great addition to that. So maybe look at, maybe potentially expand it a little bit, but also continuation of a couple of the, the ones that make sense from elementary to middle school to high school.
Perfect. Any other thoughts or feedback on this one? All right, I appreciate the great questions and feedback and information. And I will get that back to the board. Like I said, we'll loop back at May 20th, and if anything comes up prior to that time, just let me know.
I'm just going to close with, we discussed looking at bowling and we got a email, the board received an email. I, I don't know if it was, it was coincidental, I'm assuming it wasn't timed, but a parent requests to look at a bowling team at the high school. So that kind of coincidence doesn't happen often, so it makes sense to, to look at it.
The second thing that's on the agenda for discussion is needlepoint bipolar ionization. We've talked about this over the, the past few meetings. Steve's going to come to the podium just as a, a resource in answering any questions. But Mr. Miko, you gave the direction that the board needs to give direction at this meeting as to where we are going with this decision. So Mr. Brechner, through my update, shared with you a lot of information, you know, as to the comparability between the cost for MERV 13 versus bipolar ionization, some research that is there. So, you know, as we frame this conversation, and Steve and I have discussed this, really the conversation is about what air quality do we want in, in our buildings? And if we are comfortable with the air quality that we currently have in our buildings, and we haven't done all of our buildings, but I believe at a couple of buildings, we've done air quality tests in the past, and the air quality tests have come back as acceptable levels at, at the buildings we've, we've done this at. If we are comfortable with the level of filtration and air quality we have, then the decision pathway is just stay the course. Stay the course with what we have in terms of filtration, in terms of air circulation. If the decision is we want to enhance or improve that air quality, Steve has explored two options and shared that with you. The two options that are currently available are MERV 13 filters and needlepoint bipolar ionization. Based on the, the information Steve provided to you, MERV 13 filtration is financially impractical and feasibly impractical at, in, at our elementary buildings other than replacing the entire HVAC systems there. Which leads us to, if you want to improve the air quality, needlepoint bipolar ionization is the pathway that we, that we would need to take a look at. Steve, anything you'd like to add to the intro before we turn it over to the board?
No, I thank you for the intro.
You're welcome. So we now turn it over to the board. Steve's here to answer, we don't have a formal presentation for you, we've given you all of the information, I believe we've, we've been asked to provide. So Mr. Miko, I turn it over to you to kind of lead the discussion, ultimately give us guidance on how you would like to move forward.
So I'm just going to make it informal. Does anybody have any specific questions of the information that Steve provided? Or is everyone comfortable with it? So, I'm sorry Seth, did, nope, nope, okay. So I, I'm, you know, the, the idea of improving air quality, nobody's against good air quality. We have good air quality. I spent too much time, I shouldn't say too much time, I spent a lot of time learning about needlepoint ionization, et cetera. And I appreciate the time you put into it, Steve. We, we may come to a point where construction rules require us to update our air filtration level or what have you, but those aren't mandated currently. We're within our guidelines, our air quality is sufficient. The needlepoint was a response to the COVID-19 pandemic, and I appreciate it. But everything that I read about that and using it, you know, is always along the lines of organizations, people, whatever, should also consider improving your air quality. And this is, this might be a way to do it. So in a long roundabout way, I'm comfortable saying we're good right now. I do want to look at what needs to happen at Kinsner, and we discussed that. But we don't need to, we don't need, need to make that decision right now. But I'm comfortable with staying the course and, you know, as a, as a district. with staying the course and, you know, as a, as a district-wide initiative, I'm comfortable that we don't need to install needlepoint or upgrade to the MERV 13 until or if it's, it's mandated, whether it be by the state or the, at a federal level. And then I think naturally, we're going to look at it when we look at building new, new elementary schools. Anybody else have any comments or questions?
I can't find my notes, I apologize, but the middle school being the newest building in the district, can that hold MERV 13 or thicker filters as it is right now?
Some of them can. It's, it's more about not just can they hold the filter, but the increased pressure. So building the capacity within the unit for intake and exhaust to equalize the thicker filter, but there are some that can.
This is where I've spent too much time pretending I know about HVAC, but as I understand it, the issue is, is it's not just as simple as putting in this thicker, better filter. If this thicker, better filter is put in place and the rest of the system can't actually pull the air through it, you actually are in a worse position because airflow is essential to actually making the, the filter do its job. And so, you know, in, when I was looking at it, the thought I had, it was similar, if you have a MERV 13, if you upgrade that filter and the rest of the system can't handle it, it is the same thing as not replacing your regular filter. It gets clogged and you don't get any airflow through, and you run into a similar issue with the filters, and I think that's what you're alluding to, that we, you know, we can put them in there, but now we have to talk about having the horsepower to pull air through them.
Correct. Could you just throw the filter in? Yes, but you're, you're significantly decreasing the life of all of your mechanical components in your HVAC system at that point, because you're putting some serious strain on them. It's just like, you know, running your engine at a normal level, but when it starts to wind, you better back off. That's what basically is going to start to happen, that those motors are going to start whining because they're just trying to pull so much air through, and eventually they would give out earlier. So some could handle it, but we would have to look and identify with an HVAC company to make sure that the motors are of the capacity. And then also pulling air in, if you pull too much in, and we talked about this before, and if we don't get the air out, you're creating an imbalance of pressure in the building, ears start popping, people that, such as myself, that have vertigo, it's going to be a nightmare on us. Not that, yeah, I mean, I can, I can walk sideways, you know, down the hallway a little bit if I have to, you know, if you, if that's what you wish. But, you know, also doors not shutting correctly, you know, just equalizing the air pressure would also be an issue at that point.
Thank you.
When you say, like, what group would mandate that we have needlepoint ionization?
No one's mandating the needlepoint. What ASHRAE is coming out with is saying that, that in their criteria is that the air quality needs to be addressed, and what they're recommending is a MERV 13 quality or better. And right now, we're at MERV eight and 10 in our components.
I mean, like, like Rich was saying, that not to go for it until we received a mandate, like who would, who would, would that come from the state of Ohio, or would someone say we need to prove our air quality to this level?
ASHRAE would transfer from recommendation to requirement, and then that would be enforced by, because that's a federal government agency, then they would start to filter down through different health codes and, and things like that. The construction companies, of course, would, as soon as that kind of mandate comes down, capitalism would, would take over and everybody would rush. It's kind of like, I guess my example would be, if you remember when, when in football, that it came down, you better get a four-star helmet, and of course, all of a sudden, everybody started making four-star helmets, and, and you know, God bless you if you were risking a two-star helmet at that point. It's going to be that same concept. If the government, the federal government comes out and turns, changes that recommendation to a requirement, it's really going to be a moot point because every construction company is going to start coming at us saying, here, we have MERV 13 at this cost, at this rate, this is why you want to go with us. It's similar to what, what's happening with LED lighting. You know, the, the technology is tried and tested and true, and now everybody wants to sell it to us because it's just that much better than T8s. So it's the same concept.
You have your direction, Steve. Thanks for all your hard work, and we'll continue.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Miko, one thing that's not on the agenda that I'd like to update the board, I've updated you via our update communications, but it's some of the work that we're doing at Strongsville Middle School. So, you know, over, over the, the past few months, we've started to see unfortunately an increase in unacceptable behavior from some of our students, specifically behavior related to hate-based comments and speech from students to other students. And this hate-based speech could be focused on race, it could be focused on religion, it could be focused to a characteristic, an appearance feature, a disability, a perceived sexual orientation, whatever it may be. And, and the middle school administration has done a wonderful job of trying to proactively address this issue as well as reactively addressing it when students are engaging in, in this behavior. And so they've been, they've been addressing this on a case-by-case basis. There's nothing positive about the situation that's, that's happening for some of our students at the middle school, but, but the one positive of the intervention is that the intervention from administration is working. To this point, when we've had a student say a horrific thing to another student and addressed it with consequences and education and parent involvement, we have had no repeat offenders that has been communicated to me in, in terms of that behavior. So that is working. The challenge we're having is that it's spreading to other students. It's going to other students and other students, whether, whether, Mr. Roberts, I know you or not, I may feel empowered to say something horrible to you about whatever it is I want to say about you. And whether I know you, whether I don't, whether it's passing the hallway or in a class or in a lunchroom, these are some of the behaviors that are going on. And so in, in discussions with the middle school administration, last week, we sat down and said, we, we've moved from our ability to handle this effectively on a case-by-case basis, and we need to systematically look at how we are going to address this, not only in the last four weeks of the school year, but then plan, planning moving forward for the 21, 22 school year as well. So based on that, you know, Mrs. Boydham and I talked and, and shared our desire that we need to have clear expectations and conversations with our students, that we need to loop our parents in as partners in this work and be transparent with what's happening and the work that we're doing, and get staff on board and to continue these efforts and work to improve the environment for all of our students. So as we talked about in, in our work, we want all of our students to have a true sense of belonging in our school district, in our classroom, we want them to feel safe, we want them to be valued, accepted, and heard for who they are as individuals, not feeling that they have to be somebody else to fit in at, at the building. And so yesterday, Mrs. Boydham shared a communication with, with our parents. She has provided staff meeting beforehand to work with our, all of our staff and train our staff on, on the, the support that we were going to provide today. And so today, Mrs. Boydham met with all of the students in the building, shared clear expectations for behavior and what's expected of a, of a school community at, at the middle school. And the focus of her comments were in three areas. We want all of our students to have a sense of belonging to our school district and feel valued, as I shared. We need to eliminate the hate-based comments and speech that's happening between students, and we need to have mutual respect between our students and adults and everyone. She shared that message as a whole group. The students then went back to their teams and their classrooms. Teachers were given guided lesson plans for how to work through, so we had clear, consistent expectations shared throughout and education throughout. And then after those meetings today, she sent all of the information, the outline of what was done, the videos, the resources, the questions to all of our parents, inviting our parents to support this work at home. Prior to implementing all of this, she met with staff committees to vet the plan. She talked with my student advisory group to get their input and insight on what they were thinking for the, the assemblies and the work, and she had key, key parents involved in helping look at a parent perspective of prior to, to putting this out there. So this is not a one-and-done approach. This is an ongoing area of focus and work at, at the middle school. And in talking to Mrs. Boydham later on this afternoon, she said the, the feedback from, from our students and our staff has, has been positive in terms of the, the experience that the, that the kids had today and will continue to, to have throughout the coming weeks. It's also important to remember, I, I know, and I'm equally as frustrated as some of our parents are and disappointed in some of the actions that our students are exhibiting, but we also know that we've got thousands of good kids in our school district. And, and we are going to focus on the students that are making the right decisions, are making the right choices, are showing respect, building a sense of belonging and community in their school, and we're going to effectively and quickly address those that are not in supporting their growth and development to, to understand how to interact in a, in an appropriate way. We're not pointing fingers, we're not blaming, we're not saying anybody's a bad person, we're just saying some of our students are making bad choices. As we look at the middle school, it's not that this is not happening throughout, but it is concentrated in sixth grade. So we are targeting some of the challenges that we're having with our sixth grade class as well as all of our grade levels, and I will keep the board updated as we continue to, to work through this. But today was a, was a positive step that continues to support the work that we've done as a district in terms of the, the training we've provided our, our staff throughout the year, the focus groups that we've already held with our, our staff in, in supporting our students in these areas, and the focus groups that are planned in the coming weeks before the end of the school year to get student voice in their experiences in our school district, which will help develop a, a more systemic plan for 21, 22. So I wanted to share that update, and if there's any feedback or questions for the, for the board at this point in time, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Are there any questions? Follow-up? So I will share that we all, the entire board is invested in, in this, in these efforts. We started, we started talking about this prior to the pandemic. I don't want to say we paused, but the pandemic took our attention away, but even before the pandemic was over, we revisited it, and as a district, we realized the work is important. The thought that I had is, is that, you know, when, when these kinds of situations come about, parents naturally react, and they naturally have concerns for their own children, et cetera, and I think sometimes we all jump to assumptions. And so I would just ask all the parents, work with the, work with your principals, work with your teachers, et cetera, to find out, you know, what is, what is truly going on, and, and to have those conversations with your children at an appropriate level, whether it's elementary, whether it's middle school, whether it's high school. The conversations are easy when it's about reading, writing, and arithmetic. The conversations become more difficult, they're just as important, and we're just as committed to having those conversations. But, you know, the board, the administration, we all get emails about the different kinds of concerns and, and whatever perspective a, a parent is coming from. What I would ask everyone to think about is, our job is to make sure that every student in Strongsville feels included, feels safe, feels welcome, and at the same time, as the adults, we're preparing those students for what they're going to experience when they grow up and, and become adults. And so on the one hand, we want to, we want to protect our students and have them concentrate on the things that we think is important. On the other hand, these kinds of issues, hate-based speech, et cetera, is not just something in the news, it's something that we have to deal with and we have to teach our students appropriately, because they're going to experience it in their own classrooms, in their own school, and then when they grow up and become adults and, and whatever their, wherever they end up. So it is, it important work, and we will continue to stay informed and continue to support the work.
Moving on to curriculum.
Thank you.
We have summer school dates for your consideration. Be it resolved upon my recommendation that elementary and secondary summer school for the 2021 be approved for the following dates. Elementary is June 7th through July 20, or July 1st, that's Monday through Thursday, and the same dates for secondary and the same days, Monday through Thursday. Jenny, anything on, is there a deadline yet for enrolling in that? Any updates you want to give on summer school planning?
Yeah, the deadline was April 30th to, to register. However, if, if you still have an interest and you need to get ahold of us, please do so immediately, because we are starting to plan staffing. There will be some additional surveys that will be sent out soon, just to make sure that those have, that have registered are still committed to, to coming. We've had the majority of our students that want to come in person, but there are a few still that, that would prefer virtual options, so we're looking at that and how we can certainly accommodate those needs. But we've had an incredible response, very excited about the programs that we're going to be able to offer this summer, and I, you know, I just, I'm thrilled for our students that they'll be able to continue this, continue their education and, you know, review anything that they may have missed, and I just think it's going to be a really good, good summer for, for June and for our students.
Thank you, Jenny.
Jenny, is there anyone who wouldn't benefit from summer school this year?
That's a
And I say that tongue-in-cheek, I think some parents are like, well, my child is, is ahead, blah, blah, blah.
Yeah.
That was an unfortunate way to put it. My child is ahead, my child doesn't necessarily need more, more instruction or what have you, but I think in, in response to the pandemic, you know, we, we have programs for summer school for every level of, of learner, and they would benefit from it. But I don't want to put words in your mouth.
No, those are, those are good words. I think, you know, it shows based on the response that we have from Makerspace, our book clubs, even social emotional counseling help, we have, we have a good response there. And we recently sent out a survey for our gifted population, and we had a great response there. So like you said, Mr. Miko, there is a, something for everybody, and even at the secondary level, everybody can take part in that, so.
Thank you.
Next, we have the Second Step Program. This is the curriculum for our classroom guidance lessons at the elementary level. Be it resolved upon my recommendation that the district pays to purchase five-year licenses to the Second Step Program for most social emotional development of students in grades K to eight at the cost of $37,665. We are going to pay for this from the general fund, and it will be reimbursed with ESAR funds when available. Any questions on curriculum? Student Services, we have two settlement resolutions for your consideration, the board has seen both of these. The first one is found in Exhibit C, and this requires a vote.
Student Services, Section 1, Settlement Resolution, Exhibit C. Do I have a motion? Second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Roberts, second by Mrs. Hausum. Any discussion? Mr. Onagostu, would you take the roll?
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mrs. Hausum?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissell?
Yes.
Mrs. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes, and the motion carries.
We have a second settlement resolution under C2 and found in Exhibit D.
Again, Section Student Services, Number 2, Settlement Resolution, Exhibit D. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, would you take the roll?
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mrs. Hausum?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissell?
Yes.
Mrs. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes, and the motion carries.
And now I'll turn it over to Jenny for the human resource report.
Thank you, Dr. Reiba. Under human resources this evening, I have the following items for your consideration. Under D1, we have the resignation of a certificated staff member. Under D2, retirement of a leadership staff member. And under D3, we have the unpaid leave for a certificated staff member. And that concludes my report.
And that concludes the superintendent's report.
Jenny, if we, if we remove anyone from their retirement, do they still have to come in and work? Make sure to offer our congratulations.
I will.
Next on our agenda is Consent Calendar. Action by the Board of Education and adoption of Consent Calendar at this point of the agenda means all items appearing in this agenda with asterisks are adopted in a single motion unless requested otherwise. Do I have any requests? Hearing none, the Consent Calendar stands. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
And I do not believe we had any adjustments or audibles. Any other discussion? Hearing none, take the roll.
Hearing none, take the roll.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mrs. Hausum?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissell?
Yes.
Mrs. Sully?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes, and the motion carries. Board of Education, other? Does anybody have any others? Oh, I'd like to thank Mrs. Kosick for joining us, and I'm sure she'll give a great report at the next opportunity to City Council. Hearing no other others, we have reason for executive session on the topics of?
To consider the employment dismissal or discipline of a public employee, to consider the investigation of complaints against students, and to confer with an attorney for the Board of Education concerning disputes involving the board that are subject to court action.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Roberts, second by Mrs. Hausum. Any discussion? We have no expectation of further business after executive session, we will enter into executive session at 8:15. Would you take the roll?
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mrs. Hausum?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissell?
Yes.
Mrs. Sully?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes. Thank you for everyone for your attention, and have a good weekend.